All right, we're in session as the Board of County Commissioners. We did take Scott off the agenda for today. Other than that, everything's still the same.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the amended agenda.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And our first item is ambulance. And it's just a payment.
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we enter into the Board of Ambulance.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, this is monthly contract, October and November. Motion on that.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the claims for the ambulance and exit the ambulance district.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have Board of Commissioners, Commissioners Report, Invoices. There are just a couple of things that I made note of on the Commissioners Report. Blood transport, and I forgot that Christie was off. I'm not sure. We pay the same price for a blood transport with Blue Knight Security as we do for a prisoner transport, $2,500. And I didn't know where the blood's going or what's going on.
That's interesting. What is a blood transport? Are we hauling?
Do you know anything about that?
That one I don't. You could try to reset her office.
Yeah, I'll reach out to her.
Okay, okay. And then, the other one, this is Health West, and it's a quarterly contract for the first quarter for $13,750. And then, there's a monthly contract to Health West also for $833.33. So, I, that kind of confused me, a quarterly and a monthly.
What was the quarterly amount?
The quarterly was 13,750.
Okay.
And I've marked them here, so we can get some answers.
I can take that down.
And then, the other one, string line plumbing, it's an outside sewer line and finish on fixtures. I don't know where it is, but this is an ARPA capital. And that's why I marked it. I mean, it's $7,500, but it's marked as an ARPA. That's all. I just wanted to clarify a little bit on that one, too.
Good.
Where were we paying the landscape out of the jail? Or did you decide to put that up?
Is it in jail expenses?
It, I don't know. I don't, I can't remember.
I can't remember either.
But, anyway, that was the ones that I've marked. But, other than that, I didn't have any concerns.
And did you see all the different power, electricity bills we have?
Mm-hmm.
Like, why do we have so many of them? Is that, each one's an individual building or something?
Individual buildings, individual meters.
Oh, okay.
And then, different-
But I know Mosquito has two, and then-
And they have an upper building and a lower building at Mosquito.
Okay, okay. All right, well, I guess it's legit.
Yeah, there's, I mean, like up at the event center.
Yeah.
I mean, we have so many different buildings, and so they're metered at different spots.
Yeah. Okay. Should we be consolidating that, I wonder?
Well, you can with different meters.
Well, and part of it is that each department is, shows what power they're using and what they're charged in each different one, too.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. And then, invoices. So, commission on the, uh, motion on the Commissioners Report and invoices.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Commissioners Report and invoices as presented.
There was three in there, you saw that?
Oh, I missed the last one. I had two.
No, look, there's our signature spot up there.
Oh. Okay, we have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have salary rate approval forms.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the salary rate approval forms as presented.
You have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have alcohol licenses. And with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to you. Oh, you have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the, oh, we did have a motion. Did we have a motion or not? Okay, so, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the alcohol licenses as presented.
You have a motion. All in favor, say aye. Thank you very much, Nancy.
We're tracking fast this morning.
And I am leaving. That's what's left. You go in business. I'm gonna go to the Health Department.
All right. Good.
Oh, yeah.
So, Shanda, looks like you're up.
Good morning, Commissioner. Shanda Crystal, Chief Procurement Officer. I have three items before the board today. The first is our recommendation to award the engineered design services for the Landville Skell House remodel project. That went out for requests for qualifications a couple of months ago, and a contract has been reached. And Procurement and Kyle does apologize that he's not able to attend today, but he is on board and would like to recommend to the board to award the contract Great West Engineering.
As far as overall thing, we don't have a design or anything yet. That's just contracting for the services.
Correct. Mm-hmm, yep. And we have, well-
Well, this contract doesn't even design it, right? They just do a study and present different options. Is that correct?
If it's all right with the board, I would like to separate the award of the bid, and then we can, I do have an item on to talk about a signature on the task one, that we can get more into the contract and how we have it currently tasked out, if that's okay.
Yeah, so-
Okay. So, if the board would-
Are you okay with that, John?
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
If the board would like to accept the recommendation, I do have a letter prepared that says as much.
Okay. I would move that we accept the recommendation and move forward with Great West Engineering as presented. You have a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
So, with that contract being awarded, so we are, as Commissioner Crowder mentioned, breaking it up into a couple of different tasks. So, the, we've got three di, well, several different tasks, three different phases. The first phase is going to be looking at all of our possibilities. We talked about potentially doing an RFI reader as they run into it. We talked about doing additional lanes in there, right? What is going to make sense for the space we have and where we see us moving in the future. So, that is going to be Phase One. Is this educational? What are our possibilities, right? What is the price, putting a price tag to those, and having a discussion to say which lane we want to travel down. Once we decide which lane we want to travel down, the second phase is going to be to design that phase. A lot of the work, groundwork that they do in Phase One will transfer over to Phase Two, but, right, we're not going to detail out and design all possibilities. We're going to pick one in Phase One, design that out in Phase Two. Phase Three is going to be the bidding out and the construction of the actual new thing that we pick. So, that being said, the task order in front of the board today does list off, we do a kickoff meeting just to make sure that everybody's on the same page as far as priorities go and kind of what avenues we want to look at. And then, the conceptual plan, evaluation meetings, analysis report, and all the way down to the fine, oh, sorry. Nope, those are other milestones. Sorry, they list out all the milestones in there. On Page Three is what I'm referring to on that, that they list out all of those milestones, because that takes us clear through June of '24. This Task One, they don't expect to exceed $40,000. But again, the work that they use to build out part of these possibilities are going to be used to then head up the details for the next Phase One. But that is the second request that I have before the board, is ask for a signature and approval on Task One, that we can go ahead and kick off and get going as far as possible designs for the new Skell House.
Thoughts?
Oh, I have a question about it. So, does it normally take this much time? Because we're looking at June next year to finish this task. Is that normal to take that amount of time to get something like this done?
While I, while I'm not an engineer expert by any means, my opinion of this would be that we are looking at so many different possibilities of what we're going to build.
We got Hal in here. Hal, would you mind stepping up for just a second and lending us some of your expertise on this?
Oh, this guy.
Yeah. You want to ask your question again, John?
Yeah, so it's the same question. So, you can see what they're, what they're asked to do here, and I just was wondering, that seems like a long time, but maybe it's not.
Commissioner Crowder, I might have been wrong. Sorry, Hal, doesn't that say to construction?
If I read it that way, it says to begin construction in June.
In June. I read that incorrectly. I apologize. That's not the milestones for Task One. That's the milestones for the project, that we would start construction in June of '24. So, I do apologize for reading that incorrectly.
And this timeframe, this timeframe based upon how industry works with workflow, workloads, responses, et cetera, this looks correct. This looks like a timeframe that would be manageable.
And construction is finished in June?
Not finished.
It's started.
Yes, begin.
That's begin design for construction.
Yeah, so it's, design begins in June, right?
Yeah, and that's, that's Phase Two for this project.
And then, how long would, how long would a design take for something like this? How, again, I realize it depends on what we end up wanting, but typically speaking, generally speaking.
I think they've, I think they've built in a buffer because of quote-unquote "not knowing" all of the absolutes. So, there's a fair amount of front-end work that they're going to back and forth and back and forth, is my supposition. I think they've built in a buffer to make sure that they're protected relative to a timeframe.
But it seems normal to you.
It does, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Is, my next question would be, what is this, what is the urgency for this work? Is this, is this just standard protocol that we know we need to get this done, and it's in the process, and we're working forward? Does this have a particular deadline? Is this something that is absolutely critical, that we have other end dates that are, if not, then this would be, another supposition, this would be set up so that they could use it as filler work when they don't have a crunch time that they're trying to deal with, and they know that they have time to work this in?
I don't know if we have a particular end date or an urgency on this one, per se.
Yeah.
It is something we need, but it's not mission-critical at this point in time.
Yeah, if so, I would assume that they've built this in accordingly, because there's not that pressure to meet an absolute deadline.
Okay. Does that answer your questions, John?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any, any offer, Shanda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then I would move that we accept this task order and authorize chair signature. We have a motion, all in favor?
Aye.
The final item I have before the board is Procurement Day. On the dashboard, you'll see on the first one that was added is the Fairground Two Metal Barns. Those were approved into the budget for fiscal year '24, and we'd like to get on those just as quickly as possible. So, we'll be drafting those up and sending them over. We will wait till the board is installed before approving that project, but we just wanted it ready to go for that first board meeting as soon as they're available.
So, given the issues we're having with the existing barn, how do we move forward differently? Is it just, any thoughts on that?
Some of the delays that we are currently experiencing aren't necessarily linked to the procurement process. When we went through this the first time, right, we didn't get any bids back, and so we needed to cancel the solicitation, and we went forward with the best company that we do have. We are hoping this time to get, the current plan is to actually link fiscal year '24 and '25 together. We are hoping, and the board is asking for additional barns in '25. We know that we cannot bind future commissions to anything. We're hoping we can draft language in a way that says that if, if approved, if appropriated in '25, that then we can link those two projects together and award them to a single contractor. We haven't vetted out all the possibilities there yet, so we don't know if we can include that or not, but that is the current path we're trying to travel down, is linking both of those projects together in hoping of finding a couple of different efficiencies, one being time, that we just have to procure at once, and two, we're hoping to get a better dollar amount if there's the anticipation of, the board will ask for the barns. Whether or not they are approved, that has yet to be seen. We won't tie the county to anything, but if they are awarded, appropriated in fiscal year '25, hoping to get a better deal, because we're asking for four barns instead of two, is the idea currently. The delays that we are currently experiencing, we're hoping to combat in two ways. One, starting way sooner. Last year, when we went out to bid, I believe it was February, March, something like that.
Yeah.
As we headed down our first pole barn avenue, right, and decided that that wasn't the path that we wanted to go down, as we canceled that one and flipped over to the metal barn, that again took a little additional time. So, we're trying to, now that we have a good path and they like the product that they've got, we're doing it sooner. So, we're hoping to alleviate some of that stress and the delays that we've seen this year. We're also hoping to make more of a relationship instead of a one-and-done, right? We're in a relationship in it with you for potentially two years in hopes of doing four barns, is what we're kind of hoping for. But, that is yet to be seen. As we draft it out and know whether or not we can connect the two, we are hoping, we do know that at least a single contractor is willing to give us a deal for two barns instead of doing one. So, we anticipate asking for that, asking for a discount for multiple barns. So, we're heading down that path, but-
So, this, so the existing barn, is it in production yet, or is it still waiting to enter production?
So, unfortunately, I got a call this morning that says that we are next in line. So, that is not what we were told before. That's not what we were promised that the barn would be here in September. So, we do have disappointments in our current production company. I have tried to push harder to get a definition of next in line. What that might look like is that a, we'll be up in production tomorrow, next week, next month. They wouldn't commit to me a timeframe on that, just that we are next. She said we will get another phone call to confirm details of our order once we are in production.
So, as a kind of a follow-up question, if we're this far behind already, what's the, the pros and cons of canceling that contract? Because they're outside of, theoretically, they're outside of the timeframe they were originally promised, and throwing that barn into a three-barn bid the next time instead of just one?
So, that, after I had the phone call this morning, that's something I talked to Jamie about, that I wanted to pull the contract and see if they committed to a timeframe, or if we just, in the solicitation, I know that we asked for it to be completed and erected by September 15th.
Right.
But, nobody responded to that. So, they are definitely not tied to the solicitation at all, but I would need to review the contract and would like to talk with legal before, if there's any, I don't know of a timeframe that they put on that. I know that there's milestones, right? If they're X number of complete, we had to do a down payment, right? And upon delivery, we're gonna have to do another payment. I know there were those terms in there, but just looking and reviewing what the contract says to see if they are in compliance or not, if there was an opportunity to cancel and add it to. I would like to vet out the pros and cons of doing that if we are. So, we are four months, give or take, in the process of when we ordered the barn with this company to be next in line. So, whether that is, whether it gets built and, you know, is delivered within a month, five months might not be too bad to get a barn ordered, delivered, and erected, but that is yet to be seen.
Where's this company out of?
I am uncertain of where they're based. I don't know. And I don't know where, where production is, like how far away, if they're in Washington, right, and it could be here in a week, or if they're in Florida and it's gonna take three, I don't know. But I can look at that as I pull the contract, too, and understand a little better of what that might look like.
I would be willing to look at canceling that contract, and maybe we can get a better deal if we were three versus two, but any thoughts on that?
I agree. We should at least look at it. And also, I think we probably need to review, anytime we have these time-sensitive contracts, let's look at ensuring that in the contracts we have the date that it must be delivered by, maybe a penalty clause. We don't have that, I assume.
Aye. So, this one I know was made by the contractor. It was not a contract that we made in-house.
Or did our legal department review it?
Mm-hmm.
How long ago did we do this? Was this before we were working on, I think we did, we worked most-
That was February of this year, I think, wasn't it?
So, that's when we went out to bid, but when we signed the contract was probably June-ish, mid-June, something like that.
But this was before we started doing the contract review, it sounds like?
No, we've always done contract review.
I mean, the one that I worked on.
Right, about the same time, but we were just getting up and going.
Right, right.
Right?
Well, anyway, I think that's something we should definitely add into the mix.
I do feel that there is a larger conversation about contracts and how many, I've spoken with legal about if we can drive that ship and create ours, right, and be in the driver's seat on those, I think it puts us in a much stronger position. But there are going to be companies out there that aren't going to be willing to accept Banna County contract if they are potentially a national company or whatever, things like that. But just having a larger conversation about how to handle, we come often, I learned about indemnity, right, and I can't remember the legal term, but where it's adjudicated in, and knowing that we prefer Idaho. So, there are little bits and pieces that I'm learning along the way that I think offers a larger conversation about how Banna County wants to proceed with.
Well, and when we were originally looking at procurement, we went over to Ada County, and they have, what, 10 contracts or six? What was the number?
I think it's six that they sent.
They have six standardized contracts that they try to use everywhere, so it helps the legal process go a little faster and things of that nature. Did you have something you were gonna say?
Oh, no. I was just thinking about canceling this contract, and thinking back to my real estate days when we had to have things done by builders or whoever. And I think that it's probably a good idea to send this company a letter that says, if not by this date, then if we don't have X, Y, and Z by these particular dates, we are going to pull the contract. And before we just pull it, that's, that's the only thing, is to give them a little bit of a heads up and a timeline if they haven't been given one already.
Yeah.
So, just to say, this needs to be up and done by this date, and we need to have confirmation of your plan by this date.
That's a good suggestion. And how many bids did we get for this particular contract, do you know?
Zero on the barns.
Mm-hmm. Zero?
Yep.
Well, that puts us in a reposition. Okay.
But again, I will pull the contract, get it reviewed, and touch base with legal about sending a notice that if A, B, and C aren't completed by such-and-such day or confirmation of-
Yeah, just something to light a fire a little bit.
That's a great suggestion.
If they think that we're this squeaky wheel, then-
True, true, true.
We'll move forward and report back to the board next week. I wanted to touch base on the concealed weapons detection, as I met with Captain Ballard regarding what our next move would be. The board had asked to get a meeting together with the clerk, the Commission, the Sheriff's Office, to understand the broader picture of how best we wanted to move forward. Due to conferences and scheduling, that looks like it's going to be on November the 9th. Seems to be the first available date, but that has not been confirmed by everybody yet. But that is what we're hoping for. Captain Ballard is also vetting out a couple of other options that she would like to potentially propose, but she did want some time to understand a little better on how that might work for the county. And the last item is the detention center roof. We have been waiting on the 20-year warranty. Versico's inspector, as well as our contractor, is on-site today, this afternoon, to do that final inspection. If they don't find anything wonderful, they'll move forward with the paperwork. We should have it in about a week. If they do find any minor items or anything like that from the manufacturer's end of things, then our contractor is scheduled to be out here on Monday to finish those up and then again move forward with the paperwork from them. And that is all that I have for the board today.
Just real quick, on the Lava Ranches Steel Reduction Contract?
Yes.
When are you looking to potentially have that go out to bid? I understand Seacock's handling that, but do you have a date on that by chance?
So, we don't have an estimated timeframe yet, as we're, so it was approved with the state, and we are working with Lava Ranches to get a prescription of the area. That is the piece that they're not quite certain of how long that might take in order to get the items that we need to complete and get that passed through the state. Once we have that, then we can get a better calendar on the procurement of the actual contract.
Yeah, I was hoping we could get that bid out before snow flies, they could maybe do some work early in the season.
Right. We can, right, we can hope for sure. I don't know a prescription if they are thinking a week or a month, but as far as the bidding out of that, right, we already have the skeleton that we used last time. We anticipate just doing that again. But it does take, we have to post it twice. We've gotta have two pre-bid meetings, so that does take a little bit of our timeframe.
But if we can-
If snow comes late, I might need that.
Well, even if we can get it bid out prior to a lot of snow coming, then as soon as, and get the award, then as soon as they're able to get in the spring or whatever, it just moves up that process in the spring instead of pushing it back.
Yeah, so that would definitely be a possibility. The, what Idaho code requires of us, to me, procurement is going to take at least 40 days, would be my best, yes. So, then we're looking, even if they were able to finish up the prescription by October, right, we're looking to the early December.
Right.
Before we can get that awarded. But again, right, depending on the snow load and where it's at, I am unfamiliar with this particular area, but if it can be accessed, right, even with a little bit of snow, right, they might be able to get in and get some work done before it becomes impossible. And then, as soon as spring breaks, by all means, then they would be off and running.
And then, one last question in regards to that. We had an issue with the payment going out. Do you have any updates on that with the payment being returned to us, or?
So, it was confirmed that the check was voided. This is in regards to Smith Gulch bond payment. The check has been voided, and then the contractor was notified that of the action, that we avoided the check, and that if there was any other problems or concerns, right, to reach out to us.
Okay.
But, yeah, as far as I know, that's been taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hal?
Good morning, Commissioner. Hal Jensen, Planning Director, Banna County. I have before you, I'm actually here as support if you have questions relative to these new fees and fee increases. Some of these are fairly minor, and some of them are new additions. We redid our contracts with outside surveyors for subdivision plats and reviews.
We redid our contracts with outside surveyors for subdivision plats and reviews. They had not been adjusted according to market prices, and we were starting to have some pushback, and then we started to have comment that unless your fees are commensurate as reviewing surveyors, we probably won't participate because it's not worth our time and our effort. So, we've modified all of those contracts, hourly rates, et cetera, which then also had some effect. There are two items, the surveyor plat review and the surveyor plat review, when the city provides a professional land surveyor review, those items were adjusted. The reason they were adjusted is to bring our average time for these tasks against salaries and wages so that those proposals are more commensurate with what salary structures are. It states that development will pay for itself in our comprehensive plan, and so part of that development is the cost of surveyor plats, surveyor reviews, these are now commensurate with our task salary, or our staff salaries, hourly rates, and what we find is an average for each of these tasks. Some of them run long, some of them run short, but for the best that we can calculate for an average task, that's what's been placed before you, so...
So like the surveyor plat review, we used to handle that in-house with our own engineer, or has that always gone out for us?
It was always in-house.
Okay, but now we're using outside sources?
So this task was always outside of that salary structure regardless, so if a surveyor plat review came in, we had engineer on staff, and engineer took care of that review, but engineer, but they also paid that fee over and above what that, our salary structure was. These are respective tasks that pay for themselves, okay?
Okay. And then for the road and bridge stuff, I'm assuming you've talked with them and they're happy with all of that?
Yes, two items that you should be aware of, road and bridge variance, $300 when included as part of a concept plan, and $550 went separate from the concept plan. Those are items that have now, that are now being instituted since the adoption of the road and bridge policy. We don't have, under planning and development, it was always assumed that a variance fell under our guidelines. Road and bridge, we have no jurisdiction in the right of way, and so, based upon the adoption of those road standards, those two fees are now added so that we're covered according to legal structure of ordinance and policy, okay?
Okay. John, you have any questions?
No.
Okay, then I would move that we accept and approve the fee increases as proposed. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, Hal.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And then Braden, you've got something for us?
I've got some payroll claims that were not included in the package this morning, that were finished, that we can hook with the first sign, and we have them done before next Friday.
That's just the payroll report? Okay. I would move that we approve the payroll report as presented. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And then, was Christie gonna come up and talk about the property tax exemption request?
I thought she was, let me check. Did you need your agenda item still? Okay. Alright, thanks, and I'll be back. She says you can approve it without her, it's just Central Christian Church, they forgot to send in their form, so we're just looking at that one anyway.
This is one of those ones, and Uri likes to have him come in and then ask for forgiveness and...
Do you want us to go around?
What's your thoughts?
I'll do whatever you want.
But I'm asking for your opinion.
It's like competition.
It's exactly what it is.
Can I see you in a second?
You bet.
It's just a standard deal here.
It is, I really don't have a problem with it.
No, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, then I would move that we approve the property tax exemption for the Central Christian Church as requested. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. With that, we are adjourned until...